I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for March 7, 2022, back to order. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session to discuss pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, and the Chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, we will be returning to open session no later than 6:30 PM. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Don?
Aye.
And I am an aye. We are in executive session. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for March 7, 2022, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions. We did make a, we ratified the agreement between the HMEA, one-year agreement, and other conversation on other unions, but no decisions made. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone for public comment and announcement?
Yes, please, hello?
Hang on one second, I will get to online after we finish the room.
Good evening, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce in Harwich. Excuse me, I want to share a story and recognize three of our firefighters. I was away last week in Plymouth off Cape. My daughter was getting her driver's license and was, received this call. A gentleman was home, laying on the ground with back issues and great pain, reached out to our fire department, and they came over. And he said before, when they arrived, "We have dogs and they are really friendly." They said, "Oh, we hear that all the time." And he asked, "Please, can you just let them out? They haven't gone out today." And then they took care of him, brought him to the hospital. He is doing fine. But while I was off Cape, I reached out to Chief LeBlanc and asked for the names of the team that took care of this gentleman. And hopefully don't butcher one of the firefighter's names. But I'd like to thank publicly Lieutenant Brad Willis, firefighter William Shane Weiss, I knew I was going to do it, I'm so sorry, and Matt Eldridge. We always take care of our own in Harwich. Thank you very much to these gentlemen.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else in the room for public comment and announcement? Go ahead, Joe.
The Monomoy Regional School District has announced that registration for the 2022-2023 kindergarten class is now open. Any children living in Chatham and Harwich who will be age five by September 1, 2022 are eligible to enroll in Monomoy's kindergarten program. And the kindergarten registration is completely online. And if you go to the monomoy.edu website, you can find more information. Information and support sessions for those who are unable to register online or who need help submitting required documentation. There are in-person events Tuesday, March 22, 5:00 to 7:00 PM at both elementary schools, and Wednesday, March 23, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM also at both elementary schools. For more information, you're encouraged to call the Regional School District at 508-430-7216. So kindergarten registration for next year is now open. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. To the gentleman that spoke up online, just state your name for the record.
Hello, good evening, thank you. This is Patrick Otten in East Harwich. I submitted a letter to the Select Board last week, Friday, and I'd like to read that for, for the record.
Go ahead.
You know, I understand that it's a tough job being a selectman and takes a huge amount of your time and thought and when you could be doing many other things. But with regard to the meeting last week, the 228-22 Select Board meeting, here's what I wrote. During an open and public meeting to have a qualified, able, and willing resident applying to fill a position on a town committee to be labeled as argumentative, anti-development, and guilty of slander, true or false, is reprehensible and irresponsible. Name-calling and labeling an individual is not the proper role of an elected official representing 13,000 residents of Harwich. Argumentative because he cares about Harwich and is willing to speak up. Anti or pro development, is that a criteria listed on the application to the committee? Personal background, what if he was purple and from Mars, is that a criteria for precluding participation on a committee? Slander, perhaps the entire conversation last week could be labeled as slanderous. And then to recommend that the number of committee members be reduced from seven to five, limiting public participation, is also reprehensible and irresponsible. It is not appropriate behavior of elected official representing 13,000 residents of Harwich to resort to name-calling and making a determination of appropriateness of an individual to be on a committee after receiving the nominee from an interview committee. That person representing his own biases, not soliciting public opinion and making such statements should be immediately removed and barred from public office. That's a tough statement, but, you know. Were the Chair's comments solicited representative of the residents of Harwich or simply his own opinion? Although common in the recent past at the national level, to have the leadership of this diverse community to resort to expressing his biases and opinions through name-calling, labeling, and making accusations is not acceptable. This is not the first example of this behavior. The Chair needs to step down. Again, I'm not trying to say this in anger or resentment. I know you all work hard and it's a difficult job, but please, we need, we need better behavior from the Select Board. So that's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick, and I have asked staff to put that in next week's packet for the entire public. If you could mute your mic, that would be great. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Moving on to discussion of, on fiscal year 2023 capital outlay budgets. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and to the members, to the folks here and the folks watching at home. So what the board members should have in your packets, you have three items under this topic, I think, well, sorry, one of them actually is related to Item C. But you should have in your packet and in front of you, board members have the blown-up version of the fiscal year 2023 capital outlay budget. This is the budget that was reviewed at several meetings by the Capital Outlay Committee, and all of the items in the fiscal year 23 column with their related funding sources were adopted by the Capital Outlay Committee. The board, you're actually scheduled to meet next week jointly with the Finance Committee and with the Capital Outlay Committee for the event that is required by charter. It's taken us several months to get to this point, and as the board knows, we've been impacted by COVID, we've been impacted by travel, illnesses, whatever have you, so here we ought to get to it. So, Mr. Chairman, you had asked for a discussion on the Capital Outlay Budget as it also relates to a proposal that has come in from the Board of Water/Wastewater Commissioners. Unfortunately, the proposal came in, or the request came in after the Capital Outlay Committee had voted the fiscal year 23 budget. So the Capital Outlay Committee has not heard this yet, and the earliest that they could debate it would be next Monday night. So I know, Mr. Chairman, you wanted to have it presented this evening so that you and the board and representatives from Water/Wastewater could discuss this additional request.
Thank you, Joe. Open up to beginning comments from the board unrelated to the Water Commissioners on what you have in front of you. Start with Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I truly am just trying to cast about for an answer for this. The Charter speaks to, I mean, we did two things. The Charter speaks to a capital outlay plan over an arc of time. And it also talks about what is a capital investment, which is something that's $50,000 or more. And I, I'm seeing what the intent might be, but I mean, just right off the top here, just because something's coming out of free cash, why would that all of a sudden qualify for moving into year one?
I don't think, I don't follow the question.
Anything that we're supposed to be adding to a capital plan would be year five unless there was an exigency of some sort that you got a town meeting vote for two-thirds to be able to flip its position something sooner.
So this is actually the first time we do the five-year plan rather than seven-year plan. So the, based on the Charter Amendment that was approved by town meeting last year, that goes to the voters.
So it's the reset year.
That goes to the voters this year. Council had already opined that the original vote at the 2009 town meeting to have, to have gone into effect in 19 and 20 was to make this a seven to a five year. So this is the first year we make it the five-year plan.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
No, I don't have any questions at this point.
Julie?
No, I, you know, I'm just looking at all the line items for FY '23 and trying to figure out if there's any way that we can jockey some things around, but I haven't really come to terms with any of that, so nothing more.
Larry?
I'm with Julie, I'm looking at the line items. I think that, I would like clarification on, well, for example, one is green communities' utilities. How much of that is, are needed this year for replacement for maintenance and how much of that is directed strictly to the green communities? Because we may want to, you know, it's needed to maintain this, you know, these air-conditioning boilers and stuff, if it's needed to maintain those or is due to replacement, I'm all for it. If it's to tie into kind of an artificial goal of so many dollars for green communities, then I would question whether we need it this year, I guess is where I'm from. So I'd like clarification, I know capital outlay has gone through that, but I'd like to understand that too.
Sure, so we were, when I say we, I mean, capital outlay and I, everyone that's worked on this are prepared to, to go more in-depth next week. What you'll get next week are all of the applications for fiscal year 23, so that you can see that. But generally speaking, for the green communities utilities, the town has to front that money. But if we participate and we continue to get through the great work of Sean Libby and through Len Cooper, we continue to get certified as a green, green community, so we would expect to see that number go down, but we have to front the money first. But we'll have more detail on that.
And I did read that, it's like 120,000 or something. We hope to recover.
Correct.
But I just want to be sure we're doing it for our own needs and not for what I would think of some of an artificial criteria, is my point.
Understood.
Michael, can I go back to?
Yep.
Because we have Carol in the audience, and so I wanted to bring Carol. Onto your budget memo, where you have transferred a wastewater of $515,000. Does, does that show up as a, another line item then? You explained that last week.
That's, Larry, that's Item C, we'll be coming to that.
Okay.
Unless it relates to this.
No, okay, we'll come back to that.
Don't lose that thought.
I've been worrying about it all weekend, Michael, so keep it in mind.
Well, I would just say to the board members, you all have this in, in a blown-up version. When you get it emailed to you, there's not much chance of reading it. And anyone in the audience that wants the blown-up version, Front Office will print it for you. We've got a, we've got some hard things to decide soon, and I think we need to give the town administrator and the finance director some direction, but right now we're showing spending what's left, $3 million on, of our free cash, and out of the capital budget, 2.280 million. Some things are going to have to give because our budget right now sits at 6.65% increase. So it's time that we start doing some homework and, and adding some tough decisions to some of these meetings. And that's it for now. We are on to some coming joint meetings. Joe, do you just want to announce those?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you should have in your possession, we have a list that was finalized this evening, that is, I believe it's already been shared with the Finance Committee Chair, but we'll make sure that they have it for tomorrow. As you know, Mr. Chairman, and to let the board members know and the public know, the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee will be holding two joint meetings this Thursday, March 10, 2022, 6:00 PM here in the Griffin Room, and that's to have the standard budget discussions that you've done jointly. You, the board member should have in your possession what is the draft right now, and we look for input from the board this evening. Presently, in addition to Cape Cod Regional Technical School and Dr. Samborn coming in on the 10th, you would also have presentations for the administration budget assessing Cemetery, Channel 18, Conservation, Harbor, Health, Police, and Treasurer Collector. And then on the 17th, in addition to the Monomoy Regional School District and Dr. Carpenter coming in, you're scheduled to hear from Building, Council on Aging, Department of Public Works, Fire, Library, Recreation, Water, and the Youth Counselor. And so that's the schedule right now, if that's agreeable to the board. If it's agreeable to the board, we'll note, Mr. Chori, of that and get the agenda posted tomorrow morning for Thursday and post for next Thursday as well. And again, this is in addition to your joint meeting on March 14 for capital.
Thank you, Joe. I guess my only comment, Joe, is there's a lot of departments on here that their budgets were not affected. And the bulk of this exercise is for department heads to be able to plead to us on the things that were cut. And I hope that that was relayed to the department heads so that we're not having a presentation on budgets that actually went up and they were approved to go up to date.
Sure, my response to that would be that, from what I took from the meeting of the two chairs was that the board wanted to hear from any department that was cut to make their case to the board, and that's standard. And I believe I heard from the Finance Committee that they want to talk to anyone whose budget has gone up.
Okay.
And so I think we've captured both of those universes with the schedule.
Thank you. Questions from the board, Mary?
No.
Don?
I'm seeing John shake his head sideways. Do we not agree?
John Chori, I don't know if I'm speaking as the chairman of the FinCom or as a private citizen, but I'm, I'm speaking and, to an extent, Joe was correct. We had sent Joe and Michael a list of departments that we wanted to speak to, and most of the departments we wanted to speak to were the four departments that were increasing head counts, because we wanted to understand clearly what the head count issue was about, and we wanted to understand that. And then the other ones we wanted to speak to were the two schools, Tech School and the Monomoy School, and the other one was the Fire Department, if it included the grant, the Schaefer, Safer.
Safer.
Safer Grant. Because I realized that grant is totally up to responsibility of the selectmen to figure out first if we're going to accept that or not. The rest of the departments, the Water Department was the other one I'd like to speak to. The rest were totally up to the selectmen's choice to speak to. We had a very in-depth budget discussion on the, on the 8th, no, last Thursday, was the 3rd, March 3 with Carol. Gave us a very in-depth budget. We went through every single budget, line item by line item, and I developed a list to come in from that budget meeting. Most of the budgets were in zero or slightly up, and the ones that were slightly up were easily explained. There were department heads, one department, Community Development, I believe, was, was closed, and the heads that were in that department were shifted around to other budgets, which made some other budgets go up considerably. But when it was explained to us what that was about, there was no need to bring in like the, the building inspector. I clearly, his budget was up $165,000, but when it was explained as to why, we didn't need to have them come in and explain that. So it's basically the four departments that were requesting heads. I fully understand, I talked to most, majority of those departments and was fully in agreement with them, but I still wanted to have them come in because not only is the head increasing, there's benefits that follow those heads and, and a long-term commitment to employment to those, those departments. So those were the only ones. All the other departments, we were pretty much fine with, and it's, the other ones, we were happy to talk to them, but we only requested the four head count increases, Fire Department, Schools, and the Water Department, if I remember correctly. That's it.
Thank you, John. Joe, just, I think we could send a simple email out tomorrow. If you're not on that list and you want to come, come. If you don't, you're, we're happy not to hear from you.
Sure, and if I could just qualify, so when I heard four head count, so that would be two under Administration, which would be the Housing Advocate and the Director of Cultural Affairs, one under Health, which is in the present budget but impacts next year, and then one in Council on Aging.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
And I do realize the Health budget was covered this year under 2022, but for going forward, it's still a full head count. And I fully support the Health, I mean, if there's any justification for an increase in a department, it's definitely the Health Department. Thank you.
So I can validate with staff, for example, Building Department, our Building Commissioner, Rod Pichorelli, actually started after the budget was developed, so I was going to speak to that anyway. If we don't need to have that on, we'll take that off the list and then we'll validate tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
At our regular department meeting.
Thank you. And then Fire will leave on for the 17th. We're going to talk about the Safer Grant on the 14th. Depending on how that conversation goes, we might want them on the 17th. I'm going to back up to the capital outlay budget because I didn't invite Dan Pelletier up to explain what change he wants to make to the capital plan and why, and then hear from Joe on whether or not we can even do it.
Good evening, Dan Pelletier, Water/Wastewater Superintendent. So although it is unfortunate, it was a late addition, I think it is an important one personally. So this was born out of, so there was a $1.2 trillion Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act bill that was recently passed. The information coming out of the federal government and state is still, leaves a lot to be desired. That said, what they were able to discuss with confidence was that the money was going to be funneled to the states and be administered through existing formula programs, the SRF program being one of those. So in order to be eligible to receive those funds, we have to have a project funded through the state revolving loan program. Part of my desire for urgency on this is we're really getting in, in the last minute with our town meeting, something that other towns and departments throughout the Commonwealth might not be doing. And if we do wait until next year, and we're going to be right in the bucket with everybody else. So I'm making this recommendation to try to be proactive and try to get out ahead of the gate with the other towns that'll be pursuing those funds.
Thank you, Dan. You may as well stay up there. Joe?
So it's a good news, bad news situation. The bad news is it's, it's something that the capital outlay hasn't vetted yet, and they should be vetting it next week, so we would add that to the joint meeting. The, the bad news is, is we don't have a dollar amount yet, correct?
Right, we had taught, we had a couple, we had four projects that we identified as potential projects, engineering ranging from, I believe, under 100,000 up to 300,000, depending on the eligibility criteria, when that comes out from the state. You know, that would better refine which project we consider moving forward with. So at this point, the Board of Water/Wastewater Commissioners hasn't voted a hard dollar figure yet.
And then the good news is there's a funding source already identified, so water retained earnings. Now, I don't mean to suggest that that's good because there are ratepayers all around this room, myself included, but what it means is it doesn't change the number that you saw on the plan here as it relates to free cash or other type, type of funds. So it would come out of water retained earnings, but this is something that normally would have come before us in December. I think capital outlay should be given the opportunity to hear the presentation next week. It just makes it a little bit cumbersome because it'll be the five of you, the members of the Finance Committee, and the five members of capital, but here we are.
Thank you. Don? Mary?
I was concerned, this needs to be a warrant article, is that correct?
So, correct. The capital articles that are then manifested as warrant articles with motions and everything.
Aren't we too late to add items? And I'm, I'm with Dan, it sounds like found money. I'd love to go after it, but are we too late to have a new, new warrant article?
So technically, no, the board is not too late. The board can add articles after the initiative petition deadline, which was the one that was February 11 at noon time.
Don?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to disagree with that because then we would have to go back into the Wayback Machine in order to be able to meet the Charter requirement that we give at least a placeholder to the Finance Committee two weeks after the close of the warrant. We're three weeks away from printing the warrant. I don't see how we do that. There was no placeholder for it.
Then I'd have to defer to the board. If I'm incorrect, I'd have to defer to the board and council. It's not my understanding of how we've operated in the past, but I'll defer to the board.
We could put it on a special town meeting later, right?
That we could do.
We can't.
We could put it on.
It's a capital item, and capital has to be at the annual.
Okay.
It's the annual capital plan.
Julie?
I would be definitely interested in hearing what council has to say then, because I think it's an important item, and it's great that you've, you know, had the foresight to prepare, and it'd be great if we could be out of the gate as the game, so.
I really, you know, we talk about the money that was out in the 1960s, right, when the wastewater was built up in Chatham. My biggest fear is that 50 years from now, people are going to point their finger back at me and say that we didn't do what we needed to, to get the money from the federal government. So I just don't want that to happen.
It's not going to take that long.
Joe, can we get a legal opinion?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah. Thank you.
And now we are going to any and all items related to fiscal year 2023 annual town meeting budget. As promised, this is just a weekly line item, and if anyone wants to discuss the budget. Larry?
Well, Carol tried to explain this to us last week, and I'm afraid I, I've been thinking about that over the weekend, and it didn't take for me. The hundred, the $515,000 that was transferred to wastewater?
$515,000?
Right.
Yes.
Now, you did that to create a separate tracking mechanism, as I understand, but that money shows up then elsewhere, right?
The $515,000 in FY, is, is, was in FY '22.
Right.
And it funded the operations of wastewater fund. And that, that was funded through the operating budget, but the funding source through the operating budget was free cash.
Okay.
And I am proposed for you to do that this year.
So when you have a negative in that over and under.
You do have a negative.
That shows up then where?
That shows on page. If you.
I do have my book with me.
So if you had the budget book with you, it would show up on page 91, on line item 137.
Okay, I can verify that later, but I just want to be sure it shows up. I was trying to track where that, where that went to. I think I understand why you're doing it, but I just couldn't figure out where, where it went.
I think it's just cleaner to.
Oh, I agree with that. I liked your moldings, but I was unable to track it. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. Julie?
I don't have any.
Mary?
No.
Don? I'll reserve my comments for after the Finance Committee meeting, so, thank you, Carol. Consent agenda?
Move that we vote to approve the consent agenda. First, authorize the Chair to sign step increases for the Harwich Fire Department per contract. Second, to approve a Caleb Chase Award in the amount of $298. Third, to approve another Caleb Chase Award in the amount of $697. And last, to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for November 16, 2020, June 14, 2021, and May 17, 2021.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Larry? Julie?
No.
Mary?
No.
Don?
Dear Lord, we're getting caught up because it's, it's starting to stretch everyone's memory to go back a year on these minutes. Are we getting closer to?
We have.
Where we sit now?
Three individuals that are not daytime staff working on it. I can add more folks on it. We're trying to get it as quickly as we can, and I can just tell you that the backlog goes prior to me.
I, I just say that because if my memory fails, I wouldn't want to subject myself to seeing the meeting a second time, period, to go back over it.
I'll second that. No further discussion, roll call vote? Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. New business discussion and possible vote regarding management of the Robins Pond Conservation Area. Good evening, Amy?
Good evening. For the record, I am Amy Usavsky, Conservation Administrator for the town. Nice to see you all tonight. I am joined by several members of the Conservation Commission as well for this and your next item. So I'm going to be presenting this one. Caleb, if you could, could you please put the image of the Robins Pond map I sent? And actually, do you have a, a laser pointer I could use, too? do you have a, a laser pointer I could use, too? So to set a backdrop here, a couple of years ago, the Conservation Commission applied for and received twenty thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds to, for part of the reason, to better manage our conservation areas. And one of the areas that the Conservation Commission at the time really felt needed additional management because of environmental degradation and safety was the Robins Pond Conservation Area, which is this area here. So for people who aren't familiar, Robins Pond Conservation Area is in the northwest part of Harwich, kind of right on the Harwich-Brewster-Dennis line. This is Robins Pond. So to orient you, Route Six is down here, and Brewster's up here. And what we did is create a map that showed the various properties that kind of comprise this area. Most of it is conservation land, but it's bordered by Water Department, Board of Selectmen, and again, Town of Brewster is up here with the Punkhorn Park lands of over a thousand acres of land. Once you come, so from Headwaters Drive, you come all the way down to Birch Drive, and you drive down here. After right here, it becomes dirt. So there's actually, can't really see it, but there's a dirt track here. This road leads, leads up to Pleasant Lake Farm, Skipper Lee's Farm. Coming from this way, Northwest Gate Road to East Gate Road, it's paved and then becomes dirt. What we are proposing, and we didn't take this lightly, we're proposing to put gates after any of the actual homes purely on this section of dirt track, which is such, in such poor condition that really only high vehicles and ATVs can access that. There's potholes that in, you know, if you get a little bit of rain, could swallow a car in there. It's really attractive, because of its remoteness, it's a really attractive place for a lot of people, but also for a lot of undesirable activities. What we, we put an existing blockade here because we are getting some activity, a lot of activity in the old borrow pit. This is an old cramry bog, tons of ATV use. And more concerning to us are the bonfires that occur very regularly in the summertime. We also have an issue, this is the access to the pond over here, where there's an old pump house, which another thing is, we'd like to collapse that and get rid of it because it's an attractive nuisance. But we're having a lot of activity coming in here. But I, sorry, I digress. I draw you back to here. So we put an existing blockade up to prevent people from driving down here, and they made a new road around it. We've put up, what has been successful, we have a couple of barricades up here. And because of the topography on either side of that dirt track and the trees, that actually has kept people from driving down the little bit of a slope here, over the road and over the old bog road. So this has worked. A blockade has worked here. We have tried to fell some trees up here to no avail, a new road and a road wide enough to drive a car down, not, not even just an ATV. You could drive a truck down here, drive all the way down here to the little beach area, have fires. There's a lot of trash. There's all along this road, dumping of, I put in my memo to you, even whole bedrooms worth of furniture. Most commonly, it is yard waste and things like that. But in conservation, we want to promote the use of these lands. Oh, and by the way, the little seas on all these little parcels here, those little parcels are, those are all conservation land, town conservation land, and have room to write everything. We're trying to manage this better and manage it in a way that is environmentally safe. We don't get a lot of walkers in this area. And one thing we want to do is actually would like to attract more walkers. So in addition to the gates, I, and I've spoken with abutting property owners as well about the gates, who are, they're in favor of it. We'd like to put a little bit more formalized parking areas at either, at either end, so more people can come and actually, and actually enjoy it. We want to dissuade some of the misuse of the property, and we're open to suggestions, but back, and I, I know the commission's changed a little bit since then, but back when we applied for this, that was the sentiment of the commission, is to put up two gates that would block vehicular access to the section of the road that's really in poor condition, and better promote, better, more passive recreation there. So we're open to suggestions, but that was the position of the commission, and that's what I'm presenting to you tonight.
Thank you, Amy. Questions, comments? Don? Mary?
I assume the gates would be something that police and fire would, would have access so they could get in there.
Yes, and absolutely. We don't want to prevent that. And back when we proposed this article, we did meet with police and fire and DPW down there, and it was agreed this is a problem, problem area.
I saw that in your write-up. Thank you.
Larry?
Only if this has been a problem for years, and so I'm, I'm happy you're addressing it. They always find ways to get around it, so I'm hoping the gates, gates work. In years past, you've also looked at more cameras out there, and that's been problematic, but.
Yeah, we are in the process of getting additional cameras. We have one. We're in the process of getting more.
I was just going to say, cameras are getting better. You might be able to hide them more now, because people were stealing them before.
Yes, I thought I hid them well, even had the police department put them way up in a tree for me, and they got stolen. So it's hard, and we have such a small, we have tiny budget and only two people in my department, you know. Every, every lost camera's.
I support that. You need Carolyn to help you. She's used to, you know, hiding bunnies and stuff.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Julie?
No, thank you for the info. And the, the only question I have is, do you have any idea how much money it's cost to clear that, like, debris out and the trash?
It would be staff time, and that I don't know. I mean, I could ask the set for our own edification. DPW, I know whenever I ask them to go up there, they go up there. I know they routinely do go up there. I'm, I am personally very afraid of the fires. And we have, we luckily have not had ones that have gotten out of hand, but we have them routinely down here. Like I said, the old pump house, which I think I put in a photo of in here, that's an attractive nuisance. Somebody lit a sofa on fire down here two years ago. If this was to catch fire, it could be, I mean, I can't speak for the fire department, but I would think that this would be a big problem. Not, not that one. There you go. So I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about, I mean, especially more people with, with pandemic and everything else. More people are getting outside, which is a great thing, and using it, but they're misusing it sometimes, too.
Thank you.
I'd just say, I'm completely against it. Unlike my colleagues, I think gates are not the answer, and I think that there are a lot of answers. But I find it ironic that the town continues to bring properties to town meeting, and everybody votes to support buying them. They pass, and then we tell certain groups they can't use them. I do spend a fair amount of time down on this property, and I would argue that the potholes are very passable when there's no water in them.
When there's no water.
And, and a portion of the budget, whatever is related to the cost of the gates and installing the gates, could simply be T base and a front-end loader brought in there to make the road passable for our SUV police cruisers. And I would argue right now that if they were to run through there, they would spend two hours of their shift washing them. But we certainly could address that with some T base and notching out some of those puddles so that they drain. We're not going to solve a problem with gates out there. We're not going to ever get rid of the four-wheelers. We're not going to ever get rid of the dirt bikers. And wherever you put a gate, they're going to figure out how to get their Jeep through there. And, and right now, I know that you and I discussed just past the Water Department putting bollards on that entrance, but then all I have to do is drive into the Punkhorn, or drive in from one twenty-four and access the bogs by the Batesland and drive straight ahead there, and I can drive right into the same spot around the gates. So certainly, you'll, you'll prohibit some cars from going in there, not the ones that are causing the problem, just the people that are going to be inconvenienced by the gates. We talk about making parking areas. I could bring up Bell's Neck. The parking areas at Bell's Neck are where we're finding the nips and the vodka bottles and the trash because we're making a place for them to go party, instead of making a place that people can enjoy this land and making it so that the police department can get in there and patrol it. I'm all for cameras. I'm all for giant boulders blocking people from driving down into Great Swamp. You gotta remember, there's an access off Leo Cocunis's property, and that is just a, that is a town-laid-out road. And all you gotta do is lift the chain, move the chain, open the gate, and drive through there. And I know Leo lets people access that. The fires that you speak of, I grew up in this town. We had bonfires in the woods. This is probably the safest place for these kids to have the bonfire. And I, and I wouldn't say that it's a great idea, but it's in a sand pit. And we've gone out there from Leo's and found the kids with bonfires before, and they do put them out. They shouldn't be having them, and I would argue that if our police department and fire department could get in there and patrol it, it would stop it. So I'm all for any measure that you can get to keep people from driving down into that bog. Blocking that road off, people drive that road. People drive that road that, that, and I know three or four elderly people that still hunt, and they drive that road, and they'll park on one of the turnoffs, get out of their car and walk in the woods, and it makes it so they can still hunt. They're not getting harassed by parking on the side of Bell's Neck and walking into Bell's Neck. They're out in the middle of this. And what's the difference between this property and the Conservation Commission's mind? What's the difference between this and Bell's Neck, and this and Hawksnest, Seth Whitefield Road, which, you know, we can't get in there with process and fix those potholes so people can access that. Years ago, they did it in the state park, but we should be encouraging the use of all this land that everybody is buying, and certainly address the problems that the Conservation Commission's having on the dumping. But if I was going to illegally dump, I'd just go to the rest area on the highway and dump it in there because nobody would see me dumping it. Or into Bell's Neck, because depending on when you go in there, there's nobody there. Or into Hawksnest, which I know you have a problem in Hawksnest. People constantly dump at the four corners. So I am not a fan of blocking a town road, and this is a town road. I am a fan of trying to fix the problem, but I don't think we should be shutting off town roads.
Can I respond to a couple of those?
Absolutely.
So again, we didn't take this decision lightly. The difference between here and Bell's Neck, this is much more remote. Bell's Neck Road is directly off Great Western Road and Depot. This is up in the northwest part of town. It's not on, off of Main Thoroughfare. Hawksnest is not run by the Conservation Commission. Most of that is state, is state-run. We have, we do have issues up there. But the reason we're bringing this one to you is because we're having issues here. So the dumping that I speak of is reality. I said, though the fires, the fires shouldn't happen. Are we, am I trying, am I trying to stop that? No. Am I trying to stop all ATV use? No. We're never going to be able to do that. That's the reality. Trying to lessen it? Yes, to the illegal uses. And just, and I would have to defer to the police, and I don't want to put them on the spot here tonight. Happy to have more conversations. But the reality of doing additional patrols up in this farther-fetched part of town, I don't, with, with the force that we have and the staffing and everything like that, the amount, we'd have to have a presence up there in order to make, make an impact. So that, again, we're not bringing this to you lightly. We have talked to abutters, there's a lot of abutters who are concerned about the misuse of this land as well, so.
And I, Amy, I would just respond with, I've talked to the abutters, too, and, and surely they may give you a different answer than they give me. The abutters that I've talked to don't care one way or another, and they said that that's how they presented it. Other than the fires, or I guess other than the illegal dumping, forgetting, forgetting about the fires, because you're not going to solve the fire problem with gates. That's not who's setting the fires. Other than the illegal dumping, which if I'm looking at it correctly, there's only, one of them is, is with a cutoff that used to go down to the pump house. That's a spot that people dump brush and logs. There's none on the Headwaters side, on the Skipper Lee side. People don't dump on that side. And there already is a parking area, which I imagine would be the parking area. What exactly by putting gates up are we going to solve that you've identified as a problem, other than the dumping?
In addition? I mean, there's a lot of the other, by coming in here and parking along the road, there's numerous other trails that have been made, and I, I know that some of them are coming up from Brewster. I know they're coming from other areas. But there's other entrance points, and that leads to habitat fragmentation of this beautiful conservation land that we're getting, I think, to some extent, from people who are accessing from here. And I do understand some of the marks that are going in elsewhere. We're trying to deter people. We're not trying to prohibit people. There's no vehicular, we're not supposed to have vehicular access in our conservation areas, but we're getting vehicular access all throughout, not on roads. We're not supposed to have fires in our conservation areas.
If I could just respond to that, Amy, and sorry to cut you off, because I, I agree, we agree on the fires. The fragmentation that you, that you mentioned, I'm very familiar with the area. You're not going to stop four-wheeler trails going into that bog. There's only two spots that people can drive down into that bog. So my question to the Conservation Commission remains the same, and I would ask my board members to go out and walk this.
Happy to take them.
Because you're not going to stop the four-wheelers. And the only two spots for cars are, are roads that were there, that cars, they weren't four-wheeler trails made wider. They were always wide enough to get a Jeep down or a truck down. So again, what are we actually solving, with the exception of dumping? And the dumping happens at the beginning of that trail, because you're not going to stop the fires with gates. You're not going to stop trash with gates. You're not going to stop dirt bikes, four-wheelers with gates. You're only going to stop cars, and there's only two spots that cars can drive down into that bog. And those could be blocked with boulders that we could take out of the dump with no problem at all. And, and again, I would like to think we could tell the police chief to try and catch these dirt bikers. Not going to do it. And they're, and they're, and they're widening roads in the Punkhorn, and they're, and they're riding in the Punkhorn, they're riding over to Dennis, they're riding anywhere. All these gates do is prohibit people from driving from Headwaters to Great Western Road. That's it. Mary?
On the boulders, didn't you say, Amy, that places where you've put boulders, they just create another road?
Mm-hmm.
So it's going to take a lot of boulders?
Not the cars.
Not the cars?
Not the cars.
We have, well, that depends on where. Here, because of the topography of the land, it has prevented it because the boulders are in a smaller, in a lower area, and on either side of the dirt track that was created, the topography's higher, and there's trees right there. So that has worked. Over by here, it has not worked. We have a, we have, we fell trees. We have a blockade here. The photo in your packet shows a passable-by-vehicle road that has been created here.
That quickly goes on to the road that's been there since nineteen hundred, right? I mean, we blocked that off.
It connects up here.
But the road that that car went around those trees, the Jeep or whatever it was, that then drops onto a road that's always been there, not a new road going down onto the bog.
They've.
And I don't want to argue, I, I think it's really is the board's choice, but I would suggest that the board walk it. And I would suggest that we really try and identify what the problem is and what we think the gates are going to solve, besides block people that drive through that piece of woods and should have the right to drive through that piece of woods. That's the only people that we're going to affect. The, the people that are breaking the law are going to continue to break the law.
I am open to suggestions, as I, as I did speak with you. I'm open to suggestions.
And I thank you for that.
And Michael, it's a good discussion. As I said, it's been a problem, and a lot of it, and I too am not going to focus on the fires, but it's the dumping of trash down there. You know, I'm speaking mainly of some of Leo's property, where they seem to always find ways to dump trash. So maybe gates aren't the answer, but the goal has been for some years is how do you stop some of the car and pick up traffic and make that walking trail so people aren't, have access to it, so easily dump things. And it is more hidden, so they can dump it. So maybe it's a combination of gates and rocks, but maybe, maybe we need to explore it more. Because I, I've been down there some, and it's, and you can't get around it, and they always find a way. It's like cameras. They steal the cameras, you know, when we put them up. But we can't, it can't be a trash dump either.
Agreed, a hundred percent.
Right. And I, I would just comment that any kind of opportunity you have to use CPC funds to protect conservation land, and this one being the one that you've identified as your highest priority with the biggest issues, then I would be interested in going down. I haven't been down there. I mean, I know the area, but I haven't walked the trails. But it is under your purview to protect those lands. They're conservation land, and so agreed that you can't stop fires, et cetera. But if you have monies from CPC allotted to try to better the situation, I understand why you would make this a priority.
Mary?
I would also be interested, not necessarily now, but I think this is coming back. I would be interested in hearing from the fire chief and the police chief as to their thoughts if the gates. I would be interested in hearing from the fire chief and the police chief as to their thoughts if the gates would help or just what their thoughts are.
Thank you. Don, anything further? Would you agree to, uh, maybe take a walk out there and then bring this back at some point? Amy, you and I will pick a date that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, happy to show you. It, I mean, budget about an hour. It's a, it's a nice walk.
Great walk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Conservation also, and this is update from the Conservation Commission on the proposed new changes to Harwich, to the Harwich Water Dependent Structure Bylaw. And I'm just gonna preference this with what the agenda item says, and, and we agended this on changes. We did not, uh, put on the entire bylaw, so we are gonna try and keep our dialogue tonight to the changes. And I would, will definitely entertain, uh, public comment on the changes. And then I spoke to a few residents today and agreed that we will bring this back, uh, by the end of the month, probably the last meeting of the month. I, I mentioned to Amy that we can have a presentation from you on the entire bylaw and let the public really get into this. And lastly, um, there was a, a letter sent from a resident, um, and it was, had a lot of legal conversation in it, and I am not a lawyer. I did send that to the town administrator and asked for a legal opinion from town council. So between now and the end of the month, um, we will get that, uh, legal opinion so that we can see. But the, the, the basis of it was challenging the legality of what we're trying to do. And, and I don't think the board should be put in a spot where the board is supporting something that's not legal, nor do I think you wanna, um, present something that's not legal. So we'll work together to get the legal opinion and we will bring this back to the residents, uh, by the end of the month, probably the last meeting of the month, um, to have a full presentation. But tonight, why don't you tell us, from the last time you were here, what you've changed?
Good. Uh, for the Rocker, I'm Mary Craftrey, the Chair of the Conservation Commission. With me, with me is Brad Chase and Amy Yusowsky. At the last meeting that we had, uh, there were three takeaways that the board asked that we consider for the, um, proposal that we've, we presented. Um, the first one was, um, the, uh, seasonality of taking the docks out of the water, the in-water time on the docks. The other one was the, um, grandfathering of the docks that are already in there as far as the applicability of these new regulations, um, to those docks, the new bylaw changes. And the third was the moratorium on it. So, I don't know, do you wanna talk to the moratorium, Brad?
Uh, yeah, do you wanna cover the first two items? They're fairly straightforward and quick.
Yeah, so, so with respect to the docks in the water time period, we've extended it out to December first. So they now have, can stay in the water from April first.
Fifteenth.
April fifteenth until December first. Um, we've put language in the bylaw now that clearly states that existing docks and piers are not subject to the restrictions that we have. Um, obviously, when we do have proposals for repairing docks, then we try to make them comply to the extent we can with, with height and separation of, of decking and that sort of the thing requirement. And then the last thing is the moratorium. I'll let you do that one.
Sure. So the Conservation Commission held eight public hearings in two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one. Just looking at the whole process of our water dependent structure bylaws and regulations and trying to find ways to improve those, uh, rules. And one of the areas we were most concerned about was Herring River, where you have a much higher tidal current than the other embankments in town. And we were seeing, some of the commission members were seeing impacts and were concerned about the impacts in that, that region. And so we sought to reduce those impacts. We discussed at length having an increased setback between neighboring docks, such as was imposed in Pleasant Bay in two thousand nine, I believe. They increased the setback from sixty-five feet to two hundred and fifty feet. And that really eliminated the concerns in Pleasant Bay. And so we were trying to do something similar for Herring River.
Now Brad, if I can interrupt, you may wanna explain setbacks, and some of the audience may, may miss that.
Setbacks is the distance between the proposed dock and the nearest dock, neighboring dock. And right now, you cannot have a dock that's within sixty-five feet of the neighboring dock. And so it's a setback distance. It's, it's to avoid impacts. It's for navigation purposes. It's a, it's a rule within our regulations and bylaws. So we, we discussed having an increase in that. We could not come up with a resolution. The voted upon decision was to have a moratorium on docks in the Herring River that we viewed as the most vulnerable location in Harwich, where we were seeing impacts from present docks, and we had concerns about docks that were being approved, uh, in the last ten years or so. Most of these were approved under variances to our existing regulations and bylaws. So, we came before you last. There were some concerns expressed on having an unending moratorium. And so we came back, we discussed it, we came up with a plan to have a five-year moratorium with a study being conducted. They would evaluate the, the impacts, the conditions, what's happening right now in the Herring River with docks, um, look at causes, look at solutions, and I think the commission feels it's a very good idea to have that study, to, to go ahead and see what's happening in the river. So that's what we've voted on, is to, to have that change, to have a, not an unending moratorium, but a five-year moratorium with a study to be completed in that five-year period.
Thank you, Brad. Uh, Amy, before I get to you on photos, I, I neglected to ask if there was public comment announcement and, and, or public comment on the last issue. And I noticed there, there is some people here that, uh, have been signaling, signaling to speak. Um, so I am gonna bring that back. So I'd ask the board if you make good notes on what Brad just said so that you don't forget your, forget your questions and then ask the public to bear with us. Is there anyone that wants to talk about the road closure, um, that, that was mentioned in the previous, uh?
Yeah, I'm Wayne Colton, uh, resident of town here. Have been for a while, obviously. Uh, I'm adamantly opposed to blocking off any roads in town, especially that one. That's the East Gate Road. It's an old ancient road. It's, uh, runs parallel basically to West Gate Road that goes through Brewster. And that's just part of our history and our culture. And, you know, to block it off is criminal in my mind. You know, that's all part of us, the town of Harwich. That's the road they use. That used to be all sheep pastures back in the turn of the century. And that was why the gate was there. The pastures were there. They used to, I remember Alan's grandfather, John Hall, told me many years ago when he was a little boy, that, um, he came up to the four corners up there, I know the pines, and he was sitting on the wagon seat next to his father, and he said, "You could see all the way over to the Brewster Dump," 'cause it was all pasture land. And that's why those roads were there with the gates on them, West Gate and East Gate. And I, I just really bugs the heck out of me that people wanna block stuff like that off. It really does. You know, and one other thing, I, you know, I had a lot to say, but Michael covered most of it. Um, you know, take it, what about the, we buy these lands for people to enjoy. What about the people that can't walk a half a mile through, down that road if it's blocked off? They like, may, might wanna drive through there. You know, and Amy's claiming, well, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to use the word claiming, 'cause I'm sure you do have some funds that were granted to the Conservation Commission. How about using those funds to fix the damn road up? So the people can drive down there. You know, I was up there Saturday. I didn't see any rubbish. I saw a few, uh, spots with some, uh, yard debris was placed on the side of the road. But what the heck, that's all ca- organic material. It's gonna decompose and make the plants healthier up there, the wild plants. So I don't see a big problem with trash, and if there is, what's the matter with the America of people going up and picking it up? Yeah, this, this craziness of wanting to shut everything down, it just drives me bananas. No, that's all I had to say.
Thank you for your comments, and sorry I missed you, missed you earlier. Anyone else on, on that same subject that wishes to make a comment? Okay, now we'll go back to, um, dock moratorium, and, uh, I will start this conversation with Mary.
Well, you've certainly made my, uh, inbox exciting in the last couple of days. I'm hoping that you got all the emails that we got. And more, okay, good. So, uh, I was struck by some of the, and I won't get their titles right, but there was a marine biologist, there were some heavily scientific people, for lack of a, a better phrase, that wrote. That the, the thing that struck me is the new docks that would have to be approved are at such a level that they will not create a problem. At least that's the contention of these writers. And in fact, the bigger problem is the older docks that are kind of deteriorating, that are causing some problems. And then they referred to, um, some sediment issues up by, I think it's up by twenty-eight, by some crossover, that's, maybe we should concentrate there instead of the docks. I'm just curious what the three of you might think about that.
Want me to feel that? Okay, sure. And, uh, if you want, we have some photographs. We can discuss things as well. I think, um, you know, the docks that are existing, um, many were built a long time ago, and they were built under different conditions, and some of those low-lying docks have much higher shading impacts to salt marsh than present standards. Part of the changes to the bylaw includes a wide range of changes to improve dock structures, dimensions, heights, to increase sunlight penetration. So we're trying to do a lot of things. We're not just trying to ban docks in the Herring River. We're trying to really improve these regulations. So, I think that's one thing. The new docks will certainly help that, but you still have features like scouring that occur from pilings that is absolutely causing difficult conditions in the Herring River, um, past docks and present docks. And we can show you photographs on that. So, it, it, there's a lot of, um, to me, there's a very large disconnect to what I'm seeing in the field, and I'm a marine biologist as well. And, and so what I'm seeing in the field, and I've been around the Herring River for a very long time, um, and what some other commission members are seeing, and what we're hearing from the community, that they're hoping to advance more docks in the river. So, with, I'm seeing impacts. Other commission members are seeing impacts. I think the study would go a long ways towards defining what those impacts are and the causes. So, it, it's natural to have different opinions on this. It's natural to have, um, those seeking to permit new docks, um, you know, make those comments. But to me, more discussion would be really helpful, 'cause I'm seeing a substantial disconnect between those two things right now.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mary.
The other thing, one of the writers talked about the number of potential docks. I don't know, was it thirteen or fourteen? Not too, too many. And five of them are already into the permitting and the engineering. It, it just struck me that for that few, um, I'm kind of hard pressed, someone who pays higher taxes 'cause they live on this river, to then tell them, "Well, gee, we're really sorry, but you can't have a dock." That's, that's the part that bothers me. You know, if there were a hundred of them, maybe another story, but fifteen, five, and two or, two or four of them are working together with a combined dock, which sounded like a nice way to compromise. So that's just, that's my concern.
Yeah, I, I agree. I feel the same way. Um, I think many of those applications are very new in, in response to perhaps the.
We have two coming up at the next meeting.
I think there has been a response to the discussion of a moratorium to move these ahead. And to my eye, some of these spots are marginal spots where there's been discouragement in the past of having docks there, and now I think you see the interest increasing to have docks. So, it, it is a small number, but if, if they are impacting the natural resources our regulation and bylaws are supposed to protect, then we, we have to consider, um, you know, they're, they're getting approved under variances. That's basically what's happening. So we need to tighten up that process, and we were asking for five years to have the study to conduct that process and learn what's actually happening.
Have you noticed too that the letter that was submitted by the, um, marine biologist, uh, didn't mention the five years? I think that was written at, at the point in time when we were looking at a blanket moratorium. So we backed off from that, recognizing that there is, I mean, there may potentially be a need to open it back up again. Once we do the study, once we determine what the impacts are, you know, Brad mentioned the scouring effect from it. There's also construction impacts too, when they're putting in some of these docks to the salt marsh. Um, so it's more than just putting a couple of pilings in the river and then hoping the shellfish come back, which appears that they are, but we don't know for sure. And we've had a lot of studies. We haven't had, um, many years of, of sampling since these docks have been in. Uh, so there's, there's a need to, to really look at it closely, and that's what we're really trying to do here.
Thank you. I'll sit.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm assuming it wasn't just a flippant comment, that, uh, th- there have been letters that were sent, and you mentioned that, and more. Uh, I'd like to make sure the board is selecting, is getting copies of all of the correspondence, not just the ones that are fed through us. Okay, and you have a public hearing on this?
We've had several.
We've had, we had eight during the period of two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one.
I mean, now, that was, you know my feelings on that. It was like, this was under the radar screen. Everybody was hiding in the basement for two years and didn't wanna go anywhere.
Advertised hearings.
Yeah, a- a- and as opposed to a public meeting.
We had, um, what, well, the, the one where he took the vote on to change to the five years, um, that was February second.
Okay, but it.
And then of this past year, and then.
It characterizes that as a public meeting.
It should say public hearing.
Okay, that's what I wanted to verify.
That was advertised, sorry about that, advertised as a hearing, as well as, I believe there was one right before that in January. Then we had the board of, so we had a public hearing in front of you folks, um, as well. We're happy to have more. But we did have a couple.
We had two joint meetings with waterways.
That was about two years ago, yes. But more recently, we've had, we def- the, the February second was definitely a public hearing. And I would have to check about the last meeting in January, if it was a public meeting or a public hearing.
And I'm not trying to give you a gotcha moment, but there, there's a reason for why I'm saying that, because there was that whole hole in public engagement that went on for almost two years, where you, people were afraid to go into the same room with each other. And if you're gonna have a public hearing, the one thing that you need to have is the public.
Oh, and, and I, to that point though, too, Don, I mean, I have to say that most of the people that come to these meetings are people that own property on the river and their proponents. The, the, um, marine biologists that they hire and, and those sorts of folks. I don't think we've seen many, if any, people from outside of that community, if you will. So, I mean, the river is really, it's a town resource, and we wanna make sure it's protected properly. Um, it's, it's not an issue that has to be, that, that can be decided just by the people living on the river. It has to be decided by the town.
If you don't mind my continuing, what Mary said concerns me, uh, because they are interrelated. Uh, the, the assessor's office is taking one step further. They do consider it to be, uh, an appurtenance to, you know, your property and tax accordingly. So, uh, there's a couple of moving pieces here where I, I kind of, if you're gonna be doing a moratorium for the public good, there's some part of me that feels like there should be some relief offered to people who thought that they were going to be able to exercise certain uses and can't do that now for the, for the good of the entire town.
Well, bear in mind, it's, it's a limited period of time, too.
But they'll be paying their taxes for that limited period of time, if it's five years.
These people have been on the river for a long time. I mean, I mean, a lot of the people, the property owners that we've, we've dealt with have been there for some time. And they, they've expressed that in some of the meetings, too. Granted, there are also people that have bought their, their, their properties recently. Um, there's one on, on, um, uh, Turner, where's Turner?
Strandway.
Strandway, that bought a house, tore it down, and the first thing he did was come in and ask to put a dock up. So, I mean, I, it, it's, it's, it's on both sides, but there are also a lot of moorings in that river that are owned or used by people that don't live there. Um, there's, we see shellfish fishermen in there all the time, too, that obviously are not property owners on the river. So, you know, those, we have to protect the resource for everyone, not just those people that are paying the taxes along the river. And it's not to say that they can't put a dock up in time, once we do the study.
Just two points before I move on to the other two board members. Amy, I started today with the front office a correspondence file for the next meeting that we have on this, so everything can be in there. And then I, I would like to see everything that you have into that file, but, um, on your, on the ConsCom website, if we can start to post this so that everybody can, can read it. That's point one, and, and I hope nobody reads into this. I'm not, uh, I'm not sure where I'm going on support of this or not, uh, and I hear both arguments. One point really is, they bought their houses on the river without a dock, so they knew what they were buying. So the argument about their paying taxes on it doesn't, doesn't really mean anything to me. Certainly, I would hope that we can find a way that people could have docks in front of their houses, 'cause people that buy waterfront on a river like that would expect it, but I, I do know that you guys have to balance the environment also and the resource for the whole town. So it's an interesting debate, and I liked Mary, uh, my email today blew up, and it's been interesting reading, but I didn't finish it all.
And the one other point too, Don, not all of the people that are applying to have docks on their properties will necessarily be permitted. There will be some that will have to turn down because of the, the geographic of that particular lot, the shorefront and everything else.
Okay, I'm gonna go on to Julie?
Thank you, and I, it's great information. I do have a lot of different questions. So, when you talk about the impacts and the different sampling, one impact was the scouring from the piers, right? And then, to Mary's point, there was discussion about silt buildup north of 28. So, I'm just trying to figure out, in this five years while you're doing these studies, is it going to include looking at the docks, the existing docks, the scouring, the silt buildup, the fertilizer use? I mean, is that where you're going with the five-year plan?
We're in the process of developing an RFP to send out for, so at the next meeting or the one thereafter for conservation, we'll be talking about what things we want this study to encompass, because we can use wetlands funds, wetlands filing fee funds, because that's the protection of the Wetlands Act. So, those are funds that we have in our revolving fund, which we would intend to use for this study. What we would like to do is regardless of how it goes, we still want to do the study, and we hope to start sooner rather than later. So, we don't have the parameters of what exactly we're going to be testing for you for tonight, but we'll certainly keep you apprised of what the study will look like.
Okay, thanks.
If I could follow quickly, the, the issue of sediment up at the 28th Bridge is really independent of the concern on individual docks or cumulative dock impacts. It's a, it's a different issue. Maybe the study could address it somehow, but it's like eutrophication, the impacts of nutrient loading in the river. It, it's a tremendous problem for the whole watershed, but it is independent of this specific concern.
Okay. And so, I guess, going back to, the comment was made that, you know, many of these docks, and I know in the materials, were permitted with variances, and there's only a few probably left that could be permitted without a variance. Is that right?
I, I think there's some marginal lots that are remaining, and I think past commissions, you know, have looked at it and said, "There'll be too much impact to salt marsh at this location." So, you know, we have to go by the rules we have before us. They're very specific. They seek to avoid impacts to salt marsh, and they seek to avoid new structures that shellfish habitat. So, you know, we're trying to be very deliberate with the rules we have, and we're trying to tune them to make them clearer for the commission and for applicants.
So, then, I guess, my other question would be, it seems like the new docks, obviously, are better designed, sort of less of an impact, if you can say that, to the area. So, halical piles and that kind of stuff, is that less of an impact than the older docks?
If I may, I think that the primary benefit I've seen in recent years is reductions in shading to salt marsh. The docks are being built a little bit higher. We're seeing more spacing between planking, and there's been more deliberate design to try to reduce shading impacts. You know, in some cases, they've gone to monopiles, where you have a single piling instead of two, but some, some piling in that configuration has to be the location where the tidal current is going to intercept it and you've got to scour it. So, I think the designs are not helping with scouring as much as they are shading.
Okay.
So, it's a pretty big difference, and it's pretty important, particularly when you have a river like the Herring River, where folks who've been around it for a while have just watched the sea level come up, and we're seeing more tidal current, we're seeing more erosional impacts, therefore more scouring impacts.
And then, I guess, lastly, I mean, I, I agree, the home values have increased all over, so everybody's taxes are going up, and if you don't have a pier currently, it doesn't mean you're going to get one. Whether you're on the ocean, you know, you have to be grandfathered in that sense on an ocean to, to get a dock. So, I appreciate that argument. I guess, a couple of things I would have is like, if you've got people, though, who are dealing and walking across the marsh or dragging kayaks and such, that's probably causing more damage to the marsh technically than the pier. Is that correct, or?
It's a really good question, and I, I think there's definitely two sides to that, and, and it probably depends on the location. But to me, structures are basically forever, whereas pathways over salt marshes come and go. I've seen them be very defined, and then 20 years later, you'd never even know there was a pathway there. So, I think structures tend to be more impactful and more lasting.
Okay.
But every single site is different, so the commission has to be very careful to review the specs for each individual application.
Okay. And then, and just going back to what's currently been applied for, which is the, the two sharing a dock, I think that was on, um-
I haven't seen that one yet, but it's coming.
Oh, yeah, okay, but they filed?
Yes.
Okay. So, I had in-
We're done, I'm done for next week.
Yeah, and your information, there was 14 Mill Point recently permitted, seven and nine, Conicat Way, and nine and 11, Herring Run with the shared dock.
Those are forthcoming.
Those are all forthcoming. So, I guess my only other question, and obviously we're going to talk about this more, but is there any thought to allowing the people who have filed, even if it's in reaction to knowing there's a moratorium possibly coming, to allow those to proceed?
Yeah, as long as they, I mean, they filed, they've had our, the bylaw changed, so we will review them, just like we review any other. There's no prohibiting of anything. We look at them with the regulations that we have right now. You go, you go for that. So, up until, if, if town meeting decides a bylaw change, I mean, anybody who files before that-
They'll be allowed to continue on through the process.
Well, they would be there, yeah.
Yeah, depending on what the outcome would be, but they'd allow, they'd be allowed to move forward.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Larry?
Good evening. I guess my, my comment would be, since we have differences of opinion from these letters, as you know, sometimes the study results are dependent on the study design. I would very much like to have, allow, at least some of those biologists have an input into the study design, to be sure that's, you know, we're trying to get all the questions answered, so that when it comes out at the end, that's not being questioned, whether it's, you know, whether it's physical design or the location or whatever. If that could happen, I'd, I'd, I think that would be, would be something you should look at. The other question I have is, is five years necessary to get the results? Could a shorter time period be more, be workable?
We talked about that a little bit at the last meeting, and ultimately, the commission felt, I mean, a study, you need to look at all the seasons as well, at least over a year, if not more, because some of the newer structures, it's, it's hard to tell after the first year what the impacts have been. Sometimes it takes a couple of years, so we're interested, we're definitely interested in the couple of the newer structures that did go in with the newer design to see, and we have commissions in those permits to do these, these studies, to look at the viability of the marsh, to look at scour, and we're only about a year past those, but it takes a little bit of time sometimes to see if there are impacts. And I think that's why the commission was saying, you know, it's not just a year that you do the study, it's going to be a couple of years, and then to compile the results, have public meetings, things like that, that is the reason for the five years, correct me if I'm wrong.
It, it also says not to exceed five?
Right.
So, so maybe, I'm thinking maybe three years, something a little shorter.
It could happen.
A little more happening, but somehow that, that may depend on what you design and what you're-
Right. Your earlier point on the design is really important. It has to be an unbiased study. It, it needs to be well-designed, and it has to be bid, and, and the bid needs to be affirmed that it can execute an unbiased study.
Yeah. Thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Open it up to anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this. And we, you all set? Yeah, you want to talk?
Yeah, I, I would like to talk.
Sure.
Susan Sangiolo, nine, Skechakonit Way. I just wanted to say that there are a potential eight docks that could be permitted, according to the bylaws now, and probably really only of the nineteen, the eight that could possibly be built. But some of those would require variances. So, realistically, there's a handful of docks that could still potentially be built, and as you've noted, there are five, five applications now, which would take away five of those lots, so another three potential docks over and above what's already now filed for a notice of intent with Conservation Commission. And the other thing, too, is that there were two public hearing, hearings or meetings, January 31st and February 2nd, but there was never a presentation made of any evidence by the Conservation Commission in either one of those meetings. And they took a tour of the river, photographed, prepared supposedly a presentation, but it was never shared with the public, and I don't know if that's what this is tonight, Amy.
Do you want me to respond to that right now?
Yeah.
So, there was no presentation that was, these were actually just made today of our trip to the river. We would be more than happy, we're not trying to withhold anything from anybody, there was no presentation. So, what we can do is put a link on the conservation page, and I will give you every single one of the photos that we took on that trip. We actually did assign, even were able to find all the individual addresses. So, and there was no presentation, and this is just a couple of samples.
But at the meeting, you said that there was a PowerPoint presentation that was never downloaded.
That was Mr. Chase's PowerPoint.
But it was never presented.
Well, if, if I may, the, the first PowerPoint was prepared, hearings in 2021 and 2020, and that was presented several times at posted meetings prior preceding, you know, the involvement. So, that first PowerPoint-
And, and one other thing, the, this, this project that's now a shared dock, originally filed for a notice of intent in 2019, so this is not a new project. It's been before you before.
Yep. So, the first PowerPoint is available, it's part of the public record. The second one I submitted, but it wasn't posted that night, that one will be available as well. It's really a series of photographs and discussion, so that will be available, I think, Amy will-
We will do that.
And if, and if I may, I think the intent now, we, we as a board will hear this again at the end of the month. I'm not sure if the board wants to get into the photographs tonight, because we're going to see it again, but is there an opportunity for you guys to do, you're looking for this to be on the warrant? We voted to put it on the warrant, but now it's changed. The board will have to vote to re-support that or, or re, to put it on the warrant and then vote to support it. Is there an opportunity for the Conservation Commission, maybe a public meeting, not necessarily a public hearing, but to do a presentation to the public and to, and to kind of the new driving email chain and, and concerned residents? Is there an opportunity between now and the end of the month, or even, or even, you know, before town meeting, so that the residents can see exactly what's being proposed? Or do we want to do it as a joint meeting here on the 30, 27th?
I, personally, I like the idea of the joint meeting. I think you attract a wider audience than we do, and so if you have room for it, that would be great. I am not here on the 28th, but I'm sure Brett, other people might be able to be. So, I mean, either way, I think you kill two birds with one stone to have a joint presentation.
I think it'd be a great opportunity to show the whole project and the photos and to why, so that there, there would be a broad audience.
All right.
Can I make one more comment?
Go ahead.
The people that you've gotten millions of emails from, no one has a problem with any of the proposed changes to the actual bylaw. The problem is the moratorium, and I, I just wanted to point that out. The other items that they've brought before to make changes to the bylaw, we're, we're 100% in agreement with that. It's the moratorium that's the issue for us.
Thank you, and I think some dialogue started tonight about the length of time for the moratorium, but Brad, if I heard you correctly, that won't be until we get into an RFP and talk to an expert to see how long it will really take. Is that true?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, obviously, as we work through the moratorium and do the study, it might take longer than we expected it to, it might take less time, we don't know, but it'd be hard to, I think, judge it upfront necessarily.
But the language is clear, not to exceed five years.
Not to exceed five years, right.
Go ahead.
Then, one more thing. With regard to the study, if, when we have this joint meeting, there could be specifics about what will be involved in the study, because if it's just the scouring of the potential piers for four more docks, is it really worth the taxpayers' money and the effort to go into another study of the Herring River when there have been multiple studies done already on the degradation of salt marsh and what causes it? And none of these studies are saying that it's caused by scouring from piers, it's from clay, from the crabs and, and swans and other things that, that degrade the marshland. Scouring is not mentioned, but if we could have some specifics about what they're going to be looking at, that would be really helpful, too.
It's doable, right, Brad?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I think a lot of that's going to depend on the experts as well, as to how much, what their scope is going to be on it. I mean, there, there was a study, which I brought up at the last meeting as well, from the Association of Reserve Cape Cod, that did a, an overview of all of the capes and bayments and rivers, and they specifically earmarked the Herring River from Route 28 south. They said the water quality is unacceptable and immediate restoration is required-
Okay.
-in their study.
Again, not related to the piers and pilings on the docks.
We'll be here, and we will, we'll definitely bring this back for a broad conversation.
Thank you.
Anything further from the board, and does the board want to get into the photos tonight?
No.
And Amy, you are going to post those, correct?
I will post all of them. There was only a small smattering here tonight.
Okay. We have another public comment. Step right up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Just state your name for the record.
Yes, I'm Mark Burgess of Shorefront Consulting.
And you said "we," so who are we speaking for?
Just me.
Okay.
I have a bachelor's degree in ocean engineering with 37 years of design experience. I've been designing and permitting docks and water-dependent structures all over the Cape for 21 years. Brad Chase has done a great job of researching the regulations in other surrounding towns and drafted options for proposed changes to the bylaws for the commission to consider. Excuse me. I have been involved in every public hearing that I know of with the Harwich Conservation Commission in the last two years or more for the development of revised bylaw changes, and I'm grateful to be able to be part of that process. I was not paid by anyone to attend those hearings or tonight's hearing. I was also on the River Cruise, as we affectionately call it, paddling my own kayak alongside. After a very long process, the proposed changes were voted and approved by the commission to present to the select board. In general, the proposed bylaw changes before you tonight go a long way towards clarification and standardization with the bylaws in surrounding towns, which is great. As a designer and consultant, I thoroughly support all of the bylaw changes with one exception. While most of the proposed changes bring the regulations current, the proposed moratorium goes too far. The commission has done so much work to get to this point, it's a shame that the moratorium is being proposed at all. Initially, it was proposed to be permanent, but after much public comment and negative feedback, the proposal was modified for a five-year period. There is no guarantee that it will be lifted, rather, it could become permanent. The moratorium is unnecessary because the answers to reducing negative impacts to surrounding resource areas stems from better designs and regulations that improve the process moving forward, not stop it in its tracks. Please remember that while the moratorium is in place, people can still trample the delicate marsh and beach areas from foot traffic and boat launching, which is entirely legal. This is because everyone has a legal right to walk across their property to gain access to the water. The moratorium will not stop this, which will potentially lead to more damage than the moratorium is trying to prevent. There are a couple of new dock designs in place on the Herring River, and the commission has acknowledged during public hearings that they were quite pleased with the status of the salt marsh and other resource areas after those piers were constructed. There are also follow-up shellfish surveys, which are required for three years, providing further data on the shellfish resources after construction. This proves that these new designs are working. The moratorium will affect only a very small number of new docks, and the existing old docks can be upgraded as much as possible when they need repairs. This is the path forward to reduce long-term impacts in the river. Respectfully, I request that the select board bring all of the new proposed bylaw changes before the town meeting vote, but eliminate the moratorium from the vote. I fully support all of the other remaining proposed changes to the bylaws. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you email that to us today as well?
I did not, I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this? Anyone online wish to speak on this?
Hi, this is Pam Newbert here, and I would like to speak on this with permission, please.
Thank you, and I would just ask everybody else online that has their mic on to mute it whilst the speaker speaks. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Let me see if I can get my camera to work as well. Nope, here I am. Hi, my name is Pamela Newbert, and I am a marine scientist. I have a PhD in marine biology. I have a postdoc from Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution. I have a PhD in marine biology. I have a postdoc from Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution. I've been doing shellfish surveys, salt marsh assessments, seagrass assessments in and around Cape Cod for about 25 years now. And I wanted to, I've sat at the meetings, similar to Mark Burgess. I have not been paid for the meetings. I sat in and listened to the process, and my comment is similar to other speakers here. And that while I agree with the changes that are being proposed, I do not agree that a moratorium for the small number of docks that are remaining in the Herring River is necessary. If you would like to do a study to show if docks and piers are having an effect to shellfish as a consequence of scour around small pilings that are put into the salt marsh, there's plenty of existing docks, and there's plenty of areas that will not see piers and docks. You don't have to have a moratorium where there are places that clearly meet the bylaws and the standards that have been set already into place and will meet the new bylaws. The people who would like to use their waterfront property and have the right to use their property, and these projects will not have an impact to shellfish or salt marsh habitat because they've been designed to not have these kinds of impacts. It's not, it's not right, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I can tell you it's not right to withhold that privilege for them, especially knowing that their property taxes will increase. And so I wanted to put out the thought that a moratorium for a small number of docks is not needed. You can do the study without the moratorium. And as you were just mentioning, I want to reiterate, and I've done this several times here at Conservation Commission hearings, is that if you would like to improve shellfish habitat, then improve the water quality. And if you can put the money, you know, if you want to have the study, then you can do that, but not have the moratorium. But if you would like to take that money and put it towards water quality improvements, whatever they might be, then you can see the letter that I submitted to the Conservation Commission and to the Board of Selectment, which has some ideas and publications that have recently been set forth to, for innovative ideas for water quality improvements. And that includes nitrogen management, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about that. But I think the most important thing to help shellfish in the Herring River, which I think is a concern, not necessarily, from what I heard tonight, it's not the salt marsh habitat because the docks, I mean, the new docks anyway, are being designed to protect the salt marsh habitat. It's the shellfish, and if it's the shellfish you're concerned about genuinely, then the best thing to do for those shellfish is to improve the water quality through nitrogen management. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any further speakers on this?
Yes, this is Catherine Ricks with Coastal Engineering Company.
Catherine?
Today we submitted, hi.
Hang on one second. Hang on one second. We have a fairly lengthy agenda ahead of us, so I would ask that we keep it to the moratorium as that's what the agenda item is tonight, and promise you we will have another meeting on this. And I think the, between the letters and the comments tonight, the Conservation Commission has some stuff to talk about. So can we keep it, keep it related to the moratorium and keep it as brief as we can, please?
Yes, I actually just wanted to ask that, I did have a presentation, but I'd rather not present it tonight because we like the fact that you guys would be able to go through our report, that the presentation will go along with the report, and I don't believe you guys have had a chance to look through the report. So if we could request to present the next time it's heard and go through the presentation at that time after you guys have had a chance to go through the report.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, hi, I'm Michelle Hunter. Am I able to speak for a few minutes?
Absolutely. Just, I'm sure you heard what I just said to the previous speaker, so if we can keep it on topic, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I'm Michelle Hunter from Ruben and Redmond. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I've been before the Conservation Commission the last several years, on and off, for a variety of dock projects. And I did want to comment on the moratorium specifically from a legal perspective. And I said a lot of this in my letter, so I'll try to keep this brief. But there's generally a two-step process for a town to initiate a moratorium. The first step is that a town must show that there's a rational reason for its action, and in doing so, it is required to provide specific quantitative evidence. For example, in this case, the town would be required to show that specific evidence that water, excuse me, water-dependent structures on the Herring River are causing adverse effects to wetland resource areas. And the second step to a moratorium is that the town can go forward with what's called a narrowly tailored method to address their concern. For example, a study for a limited period of time. But in order to get to the second step, this study which is being discussed here, the town first is required to show hard evidence of water-dependent structures causing adverse effects on wetland resource areas on the Herring River. And it's our position that the town hasn't, the commission hasn't done that yet. It hasn't really presented specific impacts that docks or other water-dependent structures are having on salt marsh. For example, as Coastal has presented in its letters and Pam Newbert, there are other water quality issues such as eutrophication and sedimentation that are causing issues on the Herring River, and possibly those are, those issues are adversely impacting wetland resource areas as opposed to docks. And we haven't seen any evidence that the commission presented to show that docks or other water-dependent structures are causing adverse impacts. So in our view, the commission hasn't met this first step, it hasn't presented this evidence, so it doesn't have the ability to go forward with this study. And I just wanted to address the study briefly. We do understand that now there is a limited five-year timeline. We still think that that's a little excessive here. A lot of cases that I reviewed where other towns have imposed moratoriums, most moratoriums are 18 months to two years. The law requires them to be what's called narrowly tailored. And here, I understand the commission is still sort of in the process of designing a study, but kind of throwing out a five-year number when they don't know, it seems like they don't know exactly what the study is going to be at this point and whether it might maybe will take one or two years or two or three years. Five years just seems extreme, and maybe the commission is in the process of kind of reviewing that timeline. But just kind of stating a five-year timeline when there's actually no detailed outline of the study doesn't seem to comply with the law that I've seen. I also wanted to reiterate too that we're supportive of all of the other proposed amendments to the Wetlands Protection Bylaw and the Water Dependent Structure Bylaw. And we think that the amendments will provide more stringent regulations to protect these resource areas, and the moratorium in a way cuts against those provisions because it's not giving them a chance to play out. Because we do think that with those provisions, any proposed new docks won't have any adverse impact on resource areas. We think that the commissions should go forward on a case-by-case basis and reviewing applications. And, you know, the commission doesn't have to approve every project if they think it doesn't meet the newer, more stringent bylaws or regulations. They can deny a project. Can also approve a project by adding special conditions to ensure future monitoring, to address future concerns about docks. So there, we just think there's a lot of ways that, especially with these more stringent regulations, which we think are great, there's a lot of ways that the commission could address its concerns without a broad moratorium. I also wanted to just briefly address it, the issue came up a couple of times about variance. A lot of these docks have been allowed by variances. And at least in my experience, and I've been on every dock project, but three or four that I dealt with that we needed to get variances. The reason why we had to get variances relating to shellfish and the Wetlands Protection Regulations, and Harwich has a broad prohibition against all docks in town-mapped shellfish areas. And almost all of the water bodies in Harwich, aside from a few, like little areas, are within these broad town-mapped shellfish areas, which are, I think, over 10 years old and not necessarily accurate. And so basically docks are banned in most water bodies that are mapped this way. And so a variance is required because there's, a variance is the only way for them to be allowed. Basically, most other towns have a set of performance standards, which I think the commission had spoken about the last meeting they had on this that they might be in the process of creating as a way to analyze any adverse impact to shellfish areas. But right now, there aren't performance standards for the commission to analyze it. There's just a broad ban and prohibition, and so a variance is required for applicants to get around that. So I think, I mean, it's not like variances were required because the projects were, you know, poorly designed. It's just because there is this broad ban that affects almost every project, so I just wanted to bring that up. And again, as others have stated, you know.
Thank you, Michelle, I gotta cut you off, we gotta move on. If you could, please send that letter to me again. Your letter might be the one that we're missing. I'm not sure when you sent it, but please send that letter again, and thank you for your comments, but we gotta move this along.
Sure, I'll resend it. I sent it on Friday. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else? Okay, I think the commission has plenty to absorb. I know the board has plenty to absorb. And then Amy, you and I will talk about scheduling, but I will just tentatively right now say the last meeting of the month, board meeting of the month. And you probably post it as a joint meeting, and we will allow a larger time block for it. And I think you've heard what everyone's looking for, so. Thank you guys very much. Thank you all for coming. All right, can I get a motion on C?
On C. I move that we vote to formally accept the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, award in the amount of $1,270,886.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Take a motion on D as well.
I move that we vote to designate the town administrator as American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, certifier, and to designate the finance director as American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, reporter relative to the Barnstable County ARPA application portal.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next is a discussion and possible vote to amend Article III, Boards and Committees, 7-10 of the general bylaws, specifically the planning board member composition from seven members to five members. And I would ask if the board would like to postpone this conversation till another meeting, given where we're at in the meeting and people are waiting. Time is flying by.
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
You're all okay with that? And I would just say, just for the record, this was brought up because planning board members have complained lately about being able to get a quorum. There's a memo in the packet that reads pretty specifically to the planner's vision on this, and the charter allows for it, but this, I think, falls under the same legal opinion we asked for earlier that Don brought up that Joe's gonna check. So Joe, this would be added to that list in case we contemplate changing that.
Understood.
But I will bring this back in the near future, and we will move on tonight.
Do you want a motion on F?
I would take a motion on F.
I move that we vote to accept Stanley Petuzak's request to become an alternate member of the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Only if Stan's been on the committee, I think, for five years now, and he's been a great member. He's, doesn't come, he's an accountant, so that's a negative, but he's a... But he's, Carol's gone, I guess, wasting my time. But he asks very good questions on all matters and follows through with his homework, and has done a very good job, more than credible, he's done a very good job.
Thank you, Larry. With no other comments, fair enough.
Just that I wish Stanley and his wife all the best with some health issues.
Yep.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. Dawn?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. G?
I move that we vote to accept the committee appointments recommended by the interview committee. Wayne Colson, full member, Conservation Commission, term expires 6/30/23. Stanley Petuzak, I'm probably killing that, alternate member, Conservation Commission, term expires 6/30/2024.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Old business, discussion on their spots to the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency, Mass Housing Review and Application for Site Approval Submitted by KIMA Apartments LLC, Chloes Path Project Application. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what you'll see in your packet versus the cover memorandum from me to the board, and this was after consultation with the assistant town administrator and our Director of Planning and Community Development. What you'll see after that is copious amounts of information that administration had collected from town staff, as well as the board's meeting minutes from previous discussions. And this was meant to inform you, as you read your packet over the weekend, to really refine your discussion this evening, to give comments and direction to staff to then finalize the letter. So that's the intent and the purpose of the packet materials that you have in front of you.
Thank you. Mary?
No, I thank you for the light reading over the weekend. Between that and the waterways, I barely had time for dinner. But I was just curious where you were gonna go with that. There's a ton of data that has to somehow be put into a succinct letter or some document that... How are you gonna do that?
So I need to do that based on the board's discussion this evening, meaning I can't be the proactive author without first direction from the five of you. So one of the things that's problematic for staff, as you know, is this is building off of the LIP discussion that occurred last fall, and if memory serves, it was a 3-2 vote of the board. You know, so there's some ambiguity, if I could say it that way. So I would really need to draw upon comments tonight from the board as to where you see that commentary going, based on what you've heard from staff and prior discussions of the board.
Can I keep going?
You can.
Is this like the Supreme Court where the minority voters can put their five cents in?
I've only watched the Supreme Court on C-SPAN when I was a poli sci major, so I don't know in that regard, but what I would say is I would need to take comment and direction from the full board, and so as you talk about it, the board can direct me to include pretty much whatever you want. So it's not that I'm required to take the minority report, it's that I'm required to take direction from the board this evening.
Thank you.
Keep going, Mary.
That's good for now. I'll be back.
And I would argue that it's all of our points. I think that the letter is, it should be an accurate reflection of the meetings, and I think the minutes are fairly clear. There was a lot of pros and there was some, there was a lot of cons. And we ultimately ended up at a 3-2 vote, which I think ultimately, Joe, you need to, you need to articulate that 3-2 vote into the letter to Mass Housing and then add a few paragraphs on all of the information Mary talked about that was in the packet from the department heads. But I thought that that was a very thorough process. I think the residents spoke out, and there was a lot of public input. The applicants gave us a ton of information, but I think it needs to be a reflection of the 3-2 vote and the concerns of the board. Not only the concerns of the board, but some board members had some positive on it, so. Dawn?
I actually do agree that everybody should have whatever say that they want, that they had had coming to the table. And I totally agree with Mary that this kind of reads like War and Peace right now. There's absolutely no prioritization, it's just, it's a word salad. It's got like so many different things going on. We have to have some sort of global, you know, statement, and then we can dig down deeper. They can deep down digger, but dig down deeper, because I don't know how anybody would be reading this without getting confused even at an MHP, and I know some folks there. It's just that this, along with a rather voluminous application that came from the applicants, it's not light reading, and I would hate to have some of the points missed because it was so much of a preponderance of text in it that they couldn't pick out what was important.
Julie? Good luck, Joe. Go ahead.
I think to that point, someone should prioritize the issues. I think everybody's issues should obviously... everybody's issues should obviously be included, good and bad. But I, I would say that we, to Dawn's point about trying to prioritize and trying to make an orderly letter, the number one thing I think we can all agree upon is that the wildlife restriction has to be addressed. So that first and foremost in my mind. And then on top of that, I mean, rental rates and all that, we had various discussions about those, but also the traffic study and the all encompassing traffic study that it must be, to the planner's point of view on not only the traffic study, but the impact on Maine, I mean, Sisson and West, Western.
Great Western.
Great Western, thank you, and, and Maine, all of those. But also, I think we need to be clear that we, we are indicating that the parking analysis has to be done not only in the summer months, but during the school hours because of the line that comes through. So whatever way we can do to delineate and clarify exactly what we're talking about on all those issues, but to your point, it's gonna be a lengthy, it's gonna be a lengthy letter.
He's got two whole days. Larry?
In fact, that was one of my comments, is that the, the date is wrong in your memo. You list is, it was due a student.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
You met on Friday the 11th, I think.
Uh, no, Wednesday the 9th.
Wednesday the 9th.
The date is correct, the day was incorrect.
But, you know, I, I don't think we need to overcomplicate this. If you look at the volumes of data, all the letters and stuff, I think you can, you can pull out six or eight, maybe 10 themes that run through each of the documents that come through there. And in my opinion, you could list those, you know, Julie's listed some, there's been some others that, one of us maybe, a lot of those are redundant. And I think the 3-2 vote then speaks for itself. But I don't, I don't think you can, I think you can simplify that and just pull out the, the common themes and mention those. Dawn?
I do have one very specific thing that needs to be said. It has something to do with what Julie was pointing out. Forgetting, forget about resolving any restriction on there. The, the application that went to MHP pretended that there were no encumbrances. It just, are there any restrictions? And it said, no. So that should be addressed, because that's not being totally honest.
Joe?
I will rely upon staff to assist me with this, and I'm sure we will come up with a cogent letter. One thing I would ask, though, is that the board affirm that the letter can be signed on Wednesday by the chair.
So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna get to public comment, and I have a few more. But if we wanna, if we wanna do that official procedure, it's been moved and seconded to allow Joe to sign and send the letter. And Larry, roll call vote?
Aye, the chair.
Chair, that would be you.
Oh, the chair to sign the letter.
All right, you sign.
I can't go away again this week.
Not at least on Wednesday.
All right. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And Joe, further, further clarification, and I do think, I'm sure you've read it all, and I know we've received a ton of emails. It's my understanding that we're gonna put a packet together, not only for the public, for the website, of every note from department heads, all of our meeting minutes, the ultimate vote, and that's gonna be backup that's gonna go to MHP, correct?
Correct. That's the intent.
Okay. So the letter, the cover letter, in, in my mind, it was a 3-2 vote not to support. And on top of the comments made by Selectman Kavanaugh, my biggest things are density, height of the building. The environmental one is the biggest one to me, in that they did provide a system that they were gonna put in, wastewater treatment system. We did have one resident that reached out to that company and had several facts on that. This, this, the topography runs downhill into Grassy Pond, Grassy Pond into Cole Brook, which we're doing a multimillion dollar natural attenuation project in that didn't assume this project, and then into the harbor. So that, to me, is the number one. But each, each board member had pros and cons. And Joe, the best you can articulate that to the vote, to me, is what I'd like to see in the letter.
Understood.
I will open it up to public, and I will start with Attorney Singer, if you wanna say anything, because you're here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Andrew Singer. It's only a technical request. You mentioned that all of the data was gonna be put back up on the website. You may recall that during the initial presentation, and Joe's nodding his head, some personal data from the application was put online that led to some identity theft. So I'd ask that those file, you know, that particular information not be reposted. Thank you.
Good, Joe?
Absolutely.
I see Brian Bush here tonight, the applicant. Anything, Brian, that you'd like to add tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your time. Brian Bush from Heritage Properties. No, I, I mean, I think, you know, the, the record speaks for itself. I think the process was, was fair and open. You know, I recognize that there's some sentiment for this and some sentiment against it. And, you know, it's people's homes, it's your community. You know, I get it. There's, there's a need for this. And, you know, again, I appreciate your, you know, your cooperation through the process. And, you know, look forward to trying to put this together if we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. I would just say that I, I respect and appreciate each and every meeting that you all have attended. There's been representation from the organization from the beginning, and all the questions that we've asked have been answered. And it, it speaks a lot that you have attended these meetings, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Peter Gory, 226 Sisson Road. Most of you know me and, and our position on, on the project. And while I respect the, the team and, and what they've tried to do, I think the, the application of Mass Housing, as member Howell pointed out, was woefully lacking in detail, filled with errors of fact, which I've pointed out to Mass Housing, omissions of, of clear points that could have been addressed. And I'll draw three others that I think haven't been touched on yet. One is, I've seen nothing on the, on the system for the SEP deck. Would be very interested in how those offsets might be, might be handled. The second being the fact that the Mass Housing application, and I know it was discussed on the sidewalk, but that application does not include the additional workforce housing site, units that were discussed in the final of five selectmen meetings. I think that should either be reinserted or figured out, we should figure out why it was not included. And then, as, as you mentioned, Chair, the sheer density of this project is, is just, it's, it's an anathema to me and most of my neighbors. This developer, and I've had private conversation with Mr. Bush and welcomed that, and would welcome other conversations, they made no changes to the size of the project. Five meetings before your board, and all of the time spent, not a single tangible change to this project before you and before us still. And the town staff had to keep commenting on the same project. That doesn't strike me at all as a collaborative, working, and, and doesn't belie what might happen at the ZBA. That does not suggest to me that this developer or this development team has any plans to work through the ZBA to adjust the project to something that would be more palatable. And we've said multiple times that we would accept something smaller. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, I would just probably answer one question for you. And then, Joe, I, I know you're gonna incorporate some of the, the resident comments, and I know we've gotten extensive material from you, Peter.
Thank you.
The, the additional workforce was an offer to this board for us to support the project. When we didn't support the project, they have no obligation to add that to the MHP application. So they may still want it. They may still go forward with it, but they certainly weren't obligated at the point.
Well, my understanding, and I might be wrong, but my understanding was that was said to Michael Busby on the sidewalk, that they would be included, and I have yet to see it included.
Okay.
If I am incorrect in that, then three people attended the sidewalk, including a member of the media, are incorrect also in their understanding what was said at the sidewalk.
Okay. So Joe, that probably would be important to note in the letter. Thank you, Peter. Anyone else?
So the additional eight units are still on the table. And it's 96 units. That's, I don't, that's what we're proposing, so.
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
I'm sorry. The eight units, the eight units at 120% of AMI is still on the table for negotiation. We're still willing to, to do that. And we, we're, we're proposing a project of 96 units. I don't know why that, why that number would come down, so.
Thank you. Joe?
Good luck. Thank you.
Look forward to reading it. Okay, moving on to discussion and possible vote to establish an interview date for local planning committee, LPC prospective members. So this is, John Ideman suggests that we do it on a Saturday, and we do it all in one day. He, and I, and I would tend to agree with him, rather than break it up into nights. I think if we set a time and, and John and staff can set up interview times, we can conquer all, I believe, 20 of them on a Saturday. The board supportive of a Saturday, an all-day Saturday? And if so, when do you wanna do?
That means no Maine. That means no Maine for one weekend.
Looking at the Bahamas, actually, but I can, I can work around that.
I'm pretty open, so, you know, choose a date on Saturday.
Okay. Do we wanna do this in March, or do you wanna get into April? And I would guess, Mary's looking at her calendar, so.
Yeah.
And Julie's the only other busy one.
Well, we didn't have any dates that we could do joint meetings.
But that had to be done beginning of the month, I believe.
That probably makes it April.
Yeah, I think we need to go to April at that point, right?
Pick a date.
Doesn't matter to me one way or the other. I have no life.
Going with Dawn. We can fly.
How about April 2nd?
Works for me.
It's right after April's Day.
I don't know.
Is, after you, is, will John provide us some background on the applicants? They're...
I'm sure we could get a packet, yes.
Sure.
And pizza.
I assume they filled out basically the normal interview form of what their background was.
You're scrolling a lot. You want me to pull it up?
No, I haven't. I'm just looking. Yeah, I guess April 2nd works.
Larry, April 2nd, good for you?
It is.
All right. So we'll tentatively plan April 2nd, Joe. Does that work for you? I'm not sure you need to be here for that, but.
Then it works great for me.
Okay. Will you bounce that off the department head and make sure that John is okay with that? And then let me know. If it's not, I'll get in touch with the board members and we'll pick another Saturday.
And did you have a start time in mind?
I think, does 9 o'clock sound good?
9 o'clock.
20 people? You might wanna start a little earlier. It's a lot of people.
We can join you later.
I'd rather, I'd rather go later.
Kick it off.
Okay.
9:00 AM, and we'll get John Ideman's thoughts tomorrow before, before we finalize it. And I will call each and every one of you and confirm. Update from town administrator on open meeting law training for all boards, committees, and department heads.
Thank you. It's, that's somewhat of a misnomer. KP Law provides annual training on what we would refer to as the big three, which is the open meeting law, the public records law, and the state ethics law. And so I made contact with KP Law several weeks ago when this first came up. Brian Riley is the resident expert, and he is on the docket. Really, the only thing we'd have to coordinate is a date. And I am strongly urging that we do this after town meeting, but certainly before the fiscal year begins. And that's to accommodate, to make sure that we can do it broadly enough. We'd have several dates that we would offer, you know, day, weekday, weeknight, and perhaps a Saturday. And in addition, I've worked with Brian and KP Law in the past, and I've done a little primer on some material that I'd be willing to offer if the board's okay with it, that helps the chairs of those committees run the meeting as well. So it's meant to be all tied together. And we can really just coordinate the timing with KP Law. The only other thought I had, as I know our Harwich Charter requires, that first meeting after the fiscal year, they must reorganize. But I think it's better to do, you know, mid-spring than summertime and that. But that's where we're at.
Comments from the board, Mary?
Is this, this, it's just new to me. Is this something that you do every year? Open meeting law training?
It's, it's something we try to do regularly. We've obviously been hamstrung with the pandemic the last two years. But I know that KP Law regularly offers this to all of their clients. So it is something that we can make routine. And I think it's a great thing to start up now that we're, you know, more in person and can have a more impactful discussion face to face.
No, I'm fine with that.
Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As far as the timing goes, because I had a hand in changing that, mainly is because people were all over the map about what a year meant. So it's the first meeting after that, the beginning of the fiscal year. I would find it extremely difficult to believe that in any committee, that they're just going to wait until their new appointments come in, and then all of a sudden, somebody hadn't served becomes the chair. So there's no real relevance to when that goes on.
Sure.
Julie?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mary?
I'm fine with it.
So you're gonna come back to us with dates?
Yep.
The longer we can advertise this, the better. I mean, there is some, and they all mean very well, but there's a lot of need for training.
There's no argument here. Staff's already been prepped, so we can start doing the invitation letters. And we can also time it to, as you do more appointments, also, you know, send it out as part of the reminder. So we're looking at middle of May through the middle of June for several dates.
Yep. Sooner, sooner the better.
Yep.
Next up is discussion and possible vote on request for proposal for Sacquetucket Harbor food concession. Joe, you submitted a, just go through the RFP process and, and where we are. Because in my mind, this is vote to accept or vote to go back out.
Correct. That, that's exactly where we're at. It's whether the board wants to finalize the process with the bidder that is determined to be responsive and responsible, or if the town has a desire to go in a different direction. But I, I would need direction from the board, because you are the final, the ultimate say on this as, as board of selectmen.
And your recommendation is to move forward with the winning bidder?
Correct. My recommendation is that we go forward with BCAF LLC doing business as Poco NYC.
Thank you, Joe. Comments from the board? And I'll start with Mary.
I, I see no reason to go back out to bid. We only got two, and I don't know what makes us think we'd get more. And Memorial Day is right around the corner. So I'm with Joe. Let's just, I'm not thrilled financially. I think it's worth a lot more than that, and I wish it wasn't three years, but I, I say we go forward.
Thank you, Mary. Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Same, same set of facts, I'm coming from a completely different conclusion. Part of me worries about the fact that, and John Sherry's still sitting here. At $10,000 a year, it's only gonna take us a century to recoup the, the expenses from the borrowing out of that. I'm pretty sure that's not what we intended. The three years really bothers me with respect to responsible, responsive bidder situation, because I know we got on paper, the company that is the better deal. My only real concern is this town has never had a history of defaulting somebody for lack of performance, because that would allow us to not have to go through three years if something went bad. We could default them and then reprocure against them. My experience is that that doesn't happen, ever.
Julie?
Yeah, no, I agree with Mary. We should move forward. And I think, you know, after we have what we have, we can't hamper the process so that we can get the alcohol license in place, et cetera. But also, after the three years, we can certainly redesign the RFP. I think John Lindon had put in 25,000 as a minimum prior. I think we need to go back and look at that, you know, and figure out what amount of years work best. But we really haven't had a great start to this whole process due to unfortunate events. So I think, hopefully, this is our fresh start, and then we move forward, give this a try and see what happens.
Larry?
I'm for moving ahead. We're getting too close to the season. I wanna give them a fair chance to gain liquor license and getting it going. And not to be overly hopeful, but, you know, there's a 3% to 5% of net sales. So if he has good sales, we can hopefully get closer to the, our target number.
Yeah. And I wanna move forward. I think we gotta not handicap people and let them get their liquor license and get the harbor open. And we have had a rocky start on this. I think, you know, our mistake was not putting a minimum in there, not anyone else's mistake. So they bid a fair number, and it's an escalating number, and escalating percentage in net. But we gotta, we gotta welcome them to the community, and they were the high bidder. So I would take a positive motion.
I got a question for us.
Go ahead.
Just... Just out of curiosity, what is the locus? What is the property? Because the last time this went out, the prior town administrator wound up expanding it threefold, and since the use of the facility is everything, and we've been having all kinds of problems with people leaving the premises with alcohol in different places. I'd like to have a clear understanding going into this, just what is their domain? What is, where is it that they're going to be allowed to pour, and they have to police beyond that?
So I, it's not on the packet. I can present that to the board, but it is clearly delineated from the town's perspective, and it'll be further clearly delineated when they apply for their alcohol license.
Is it just the deck then primarily?
Correct. It's the, it's the restaurant area where they do the actual pouring, and then it can be consumed within a number of tables on the deck immediately adjacent.
I was just concerned because the definition of the last contract had them able to wander down the steps onto some of the property.
The contract in '21?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair, if I may, say something?
John, go ahead. Just identify yourself for the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of board, John Rendon, Harbor Master. To answer Mr. Howell's questions, if you, if you walk out to the harbor and take a look, there's signage at every location that says no alcohol beyond this point. So they can't walk down the main stairs, go into the road. There's a sign there that stops them there. They can walk down to the lookout area on the boardwalk where there's a little cutout, and right at that look area, there's a sign that says no alcohol beyond this point. They can't go down on the north side, down the handicap ramp. There's a sign there that says no alcohol beyond this point. And then on the west side, going down to where that little fenced-in area where the white rocks are, where there's tables, right there, just as you get into the west parking lot, there's a sign that says no alcohol beyond this point. So it is clearly marked and delineated, and that has been like that from the first year we opened up.
So, so John, there, there is no possibility of somebody legally carrying an open container of alcohol into the restroom area?
There is no possibility for that to be a legal thing to happen. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Joe, a lot of this can be addressed, the locus can be addressed in the contract.
Right, right, and it has to be addressed in their application.
Right.
So what the Harbor Master just described, and the reason why he's described it in that manner, is there needs to be a clearly defined pouring establishment, and so the signage there, even though it's an outdoor establishment, would allow any ABCC investigator or any town investigator to clearly know where the areas are. So can someone break those barriers? They can, but then they're in violation of the law, and that then falls to the establishment. So I, I don't have concerns about consumption outside the boundaries of the establishment because it's well-defined.
And then Don's issues about performance and exercising our rights under the contract. There'll be language in the contract.
There, there's always language in the contract, and the town will always have the right to exercise our rights under the contract. It's our contract, and it's our request for proposal. I'd like to take a moment very quickly just to say, despite how I sound at 8:45 PM Monday night, I'm actually very excited about this organization. I think they gave us a great proposal. I've seen their materials. I have yet to meet them. I look forward to that. But I think we're going to have a great season at Sacquetucket Harbor in 2022, and I think we have a great vendor coming on board.
Thank you. Stand up, stand up to the microphone and identify yourself for the record.
Arthur Dunowski, Harwich. I am Poco NYC BCAF.
Nice to meet you.
So I've met them.
We bought our house in 2014. Our daughter finished third grade. She's in fourth grade now, looking forward to middle school. Sorry it has to be in Chatham, wish it was here. We're very much part of the community, play pickleball all the time, and our pickleball continue wanting to come and wishes well today. Super excited to be here and be part of this. As an example of how much we are part of this community, my daughter wanted to play basketball, and unfortunately, Harwich did not field enough players, so she had to play for Brewster, and my wife and daughter were here a little while ago, and I didn't get to see that last game even though I was the co-coach. I was invited back to coach next season, and I told them no. I'm a Harwich Mariner. I never already recruited eight girls for next season. I promise you, we will make that someplace you're proud of, someplace you're excited about. I hear your concerns about the finances. We will partner with you. We, we are part of Harwich, and we want to, want to make this a spectacular place for people to go and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to state for the record, my comments about this vendor were unbeknownst to me that the vendor was right there. I still stand by my comments, though.
Well, not going to say anything, but I didn't, I knew they weren't here for the CDM Smith contract. And they definitely didn't come for entertainment. Mary, do you want to make a motion, and that would be to award to?
Okay.
Award?
I move that we award the contract for the Sacquetucket Harbor Food Concession to BCAF LLC doing business as Poco NYC.
As presented.
As presented.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Don?
I wasn't going to do what I'm going to do until he got up, so thanks for being here.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Next is contracts. Mary? Motion?
I move that we vote to approve the extension request contract from CDM Smith for the Cold Brook Project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, it's been a long road with these guys. I just want to make it clear, I am not going to vote for this, and it's precisely because of who it is, it's getting the work. They've gotten an awful lot of stuff that was non-competitive, and some of it, they've done some grievous damage to the town with.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Don?
Nay.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Town administrators report?
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just needed to make sure I got this right, and I know that our cemetery director was here earlier, and I was hoping she'd be able to stay, but she deserves congratulations, as does her varsity cheerleading team. I just wanted to read this update, that the varsity cheerleading team has qualified for the state competition on Sunday, March 13th, at Worcester State University. We don't know the time yet, but they had a phenomenal season, and it's not over yet. And I also want to mention the boys' ice hockey, girls' basketball, girls' ice hockey, all had great seasons, were all in it in tournament time. Unfortunately, those teams aren't going forward, but this was a banner year, I think, for the Montemay Sharks, so go Sharks.
Thank you. Selectmen's report, Don?
I don't have one.
Mary?
Just one thing. In reading the minutes from one of the, the minutes we approved tonight, there was a question about a contract, and it talked about including, and this is just a general comment about contracts, not that particular one, but when we have a contract and there's performance, and this CD Smith one we just talked about, would be good. Having a penalty clause if people don't meet the dates. I had great success with that personally and at Verizon. So that's just a...
So we can work with our attorneys with our standard lineups to make sure we have that.
Make sure we get that, yeah.
Yep, absolutely, thank you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Julie?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.